And welcome to the Town Council meeting. It's Monday, August 14th, 7:00 PM. Just after 7:00 PM. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of this land, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Counselor O'Clair.
Present.
Counselor Carrasco.
Present.
Counselor Clements.
Present.
Counselor DePietro.
Present.
Counselor McKenzie.
Present.
Counselor Manam.
Present.
Counselor Morales.
Present.
Counselor Nash.
Present.
Counselor Steves.
Present.
Nine present.
Thank you. Agenda item number three, consider and accept the Town Council minutes of July 24th, 2017.
Second.
Any corrections, deletions, additions? Counselor Manam.
Looking over the minutes and agenda item number, I think it was 18, is it? There was lengthy discussion, but there's, I feel it should say, we're on page, I don't even know what page, page nine, and the last paragraph where it says further discussion occurred, I think it should state clearly what the town manager said. He said, "I am not asking for a renew- renewal of the contract. Please do not discuss opening up negotiations because I am not interested." He stated the decision was his. So I think that those are important and I believe those should clearly be stated in these minutes. Thank you.
Anybody else? Corrections, additions, deletions? I just want to make a note under Counselors' forum, if I could. On page 11, onto third paragraph where I commented about the, so the appropriation for airport improvements went through the House alone with the rest of FY18. It was the House and the Senate, I believe, along with the rest of the FY18 budget. Oh, sorry, the line above where it says, "So now a list of needs is being prepared by the airport." It was, a list of needs was prepared by the Airport Commission. Isn't, right, but it was prepar-, it's done. I mean, that's, yeah.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay. All right, that's all. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, hand vote. Unanimous, unanimous. Thank you. Okay, we also have Agenda Item 3A, which is to consider accept the special Town Council minutes of July 26th, 2017. That special council meeting, for those who aren't aware, was in regard to a municipal hearing on dangerous dog. Are there any omissions, deletions, corrections? Counselor Carrasco.
I will abstain.
Okay. Anybody else? Anybody else? You were, I don't believe you were here, Mr. DePietro, correct? Looking at the.
For the dog hearing?
The dog hearing.
I'm trying to manage counsel for.
Will you abstain from the dog hearing minutes?
I would have to, yes.
Okay. I'll just, okay. Very good. All right, all those in favor? Okay, seven and two abstentions. Thank you.
Madam Chair. I'm sorry to interrupt. I would actually like to, before we get into Chairman's announcements, make a motion to move Citizens Forum back up to, after Agenda Item 7, swearing and presentations, the way that it has always been, so that our citizens can speak.
Second.
Being that there's a first and a second, it's discussion, and if I had gone through my Chairman's minutes, Chairman's announcements, I would have noted that this evening you see that the Citizens Forum is after all the appointments. We have a very long list, but it shouldn't take very long, and we have a number of candidates in the audience. And I would prefer that Citizens Forum for this evening stay exactly where it is. However, what I was planning on saying was that after lots of information and discussion in the last three weeks since the last meeting, it would appear that we could keep Citizens Forum where it is. That's what people seem to want. However, I would like, I would keep the option open of, on an occasion where we have a lot of guests, as we do this evening, that we can move forward, that Citizens Forum could just be after that last bit. So just to be out of respect for everybody. And so I had no problem doing that, as setting the agenda is under my discretion. However, for this evening, I think out of respect to the, all the officers who will be giving a lot of their time and energy, volunteer hours, to us, that we keep it where it is. Counselor McKenzie.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to see not only it moved back to an earlier time period as well, but I'd like to see it moved back tonight, because there are a lot of people here who may want to speak in regards to things that we're going to be talking about early. So I think that, no, I know that they can't talk about agenda, but they have other items that they would like to talk about. And I think that making people sit here till the end of the evening, even just for one night, I think is unfair. So I would, I would move that we move it up even tonight, include tonight.
Counselor Manam.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I do understand the concerns and the wants. However, it is up to the discretion of the Chair. We've had other Chairs in the past that have changed things in regards to how a Chairman runs a meeting. And also, it's important to note too, that nowhere in national laws does it say that we have to have a Citizens Forum on our agenda. Citizens are allowed to come up and speak on agenda items. I would, I would support this being moved back, however, to where, the slide, I believe it was eight. However, I do understand the Chairwoman's concern in regards to some people, the lengthy amount of appointments that we do have tonight. But I just wanted to make that, you know, nowhere in the rules does it say we have to have Citizens Forum. And, but, you know, the citizens do come up, they are able to come up and talk on all the agenda items. So, that's just my say. Thank you.
Counselor Steves.
I just want to point out, I think it actually is in the Charter. And I, I think it ought to be moved back to point eight, too. I said, I told you that the other day.
Counselor Nash.
I'll just stipulate that I agree with Counselor Steves on this one, and I would like to see it moved back to the normal spot tonight, please. Thank you.
And I will comment that, yes, in the Charter, it says that all citizens and employees can speak to anything they're at, at a council. It doesn't specifically comment on a Citizens Forum, and it doesn't specifically comment on the placement of a Citizens Forum. It just says that they are afforded the opportunity to speak at any council meeting. So I just want to be very clear, it's in the Charter, you certainly can look at that. And I keep hearing that, but again, I, we're on the agenda for tonight. I'm not sure why, when people knew that it was set this way, those who are even now attending in this audience, and we could sit here and waste another 15 minutes, or we could just move through the agenda and get to Citizens Forum. We could put Citizens Forum immediately, you know, just immediately after the appointments, before the last couple of items, but I just feel like we should do the agenda as was posted. Counselor Claire, Counselor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. As I stated openly at the last meeting, our citizens are the most important people in this, in this Town Hall, in this room. They deserve the right to speak before the absolute end of the meeting. I think I've been very clear on that, and I've pretty much kept with that. Our citizens put us here. And I have a lot of respect for, you know, all the appointments. I have a lot of respect for, you know, all of the officers especially, you know, who dedicate their time and make this a safer and better community. However, our, our citizens, they shouldn't have to wait until the absolute end of the meeting. And I will say, I will make this motion every time that Citizens Forum is put to the end of the agenda. So if anybody, if anybody is expecting to come later, I think maybe you don't have to expect to stay up until 10 o'clock at night to come and talk. Thank you.
Counselor Carrasco.
Yes, I just, I want to echo a lot what has been said by my colleagues, but one thing that I want to, first of all, I appreciate all the professionals that are in the room. I appreciate all those department heads that are here, day in, day out, for our meetings. But at the end of the day, let's be real, it's the citizens of Southbridge that pay their salaries. It's the citizens of Southbridge that elected us. They should come first, regardless of what's happening in the agenda. We can have 50 items, like we've had in the past, we should be able to hear our citizens first. It's not fair for the young mother, the young father, that has children at home, school starting, you're going to expect them to stay here till 10 o'clock at night to voice their concern. It's uncalled for. I, I appreciate all the professionals, and I appreciate the department heads that stick out these meetings with us, but at the end of the day, it's the citizens that pay their salaries, it's the citizens that should be heard above all.
Is there anybody else who wants to speak? Counselor DePietro. If we could, please, please, let the Counselors speak, please. Counselor DePietro.
Madam Counsel, it made sense to me when I saw the, the Council's Forum immediately following, the opportunity for the citizens to speak, made complete sense to me, because we could answer directly. I, I do get where everyone's coming from, and yeah, nobody wants to hang out for a couple hours to get their, their point across, but at the same time, I hope everyone understands the reason, my understanding of the reason it was put on the agenda this way is so that councils could respond directly. Now, if that's an issue for the majority, hey, I'm, I'm with the majority, but I hope everyone understands that, that, as I understood, was the intention.
Thank you, Mr. DePietro. Counsel DePietro. Is there anybody else? So, again, I want to state for the record that I said we would put Citizens Forum back. I only asked out of respect, when you have appointments, which would take us through maybe 10 minutes, which we probably would be done right now, we could have just done that this evening and addressed it. I do appreciate all your concerns and your comments. You made a motion, it's a second, and in some light, albeit, and I will say this, because I read the rules, out of order, because it's an added agenda item, I will allow it to go through the seat, because it's an out-of-order motion technically. She, Counselor Claire, had any chance, an opportunity to ask me to put that on as an agenda item, and I would have done that, but.
I stated at the last meeting that I, that I would like that done.
But she wanted it back, but she didn't ask that as an agenda item, you asked the other agenda, so.
Madam Chair, it's not, it's not unusual to ask.
That's fine, we can vote, right?
It's not unusual for, for members of a board to ask for agendas to be moved around. That happens all the time.
That's absolutely within my right, within Robert's rules.
So I'm just saying, I would have liked, if she had wanted that on, we could have easily added that first thing. So I'm just commenting. I have no problem working with people. Thank you. So, any other discussion on this agenda item, which has now been added, apparently? Moved.
No, it just moved.
It's, it's, yeah, we're going to stick it in. Well, she made a motion, and then.
To move it.
And it's been seconded.
Not to.
Right, but that's still, the motion is to move it. So since we're not on that agenda item, we're working on it now. Counselor McKenzie.
Thank you, Chair Lady. Would you please read the motion again, and this way it'll be very clear?
I believe the motion was to move Citizens Forum, Forum, up above to, before the swearing and pres-, no, it's just below swearing and presentations, so from here on out. So we'd like to move the Citizens Forum up to 7A, or 7, or whatever number it turns out to be, in the future, sometimes that changes when we add things. But you want it prior to regular agenda meeting items and below swearing and presentations, so.
After Citizens.
After swearing and presentations.
Yes.
You got all that? Something like that?
I do, I have it.
It works.
Yep.
Thank you, Max. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, seeing none. Simple hand vote on this one, how's that? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. So we'll just leave it the way it is. All right. All right, a Tamman's announcements, so let's move on then, so we can move the, move the meeting along. Joint meeting of the School Committee and the Town Council tomorrow evening at 7:15, or immediately following the School Committee's meeting, which starts at 7:00. The agenda for that will be a presentation by the interim Receiver Superintendent Russell Johnston, with an update on the schools, and an overview, overview of the closeout of the FY17 budget and the FY18 budget. So I think we're looking forward to that. Hopefully, we can get as many Counselors to attend with the School Committee tomorrow evening. You'll have an opportunity to ask questions to the Receiver. After that, we have Bay Path. Had a notification from Bay Path that I thought I would share with you. It has to do with the FY 2018 state budget, which included some additional Chapter 70 funding for Bay Path, and because of this, the additional amount was $33,988, and that was able to reduce the assessment amount for each of the communities from the Chapter 70 funding. So Southbridge's FY assessment has been reduced by $5,302. So that makes our assessment to Bay Path $1,110,953. And that was presented by Mr. Yakabuchi, the business manager. So I just thought, let you know that we saved another $5,000, so that's good. Hopefully, we can save more. After that, we have school. We're just talking about school. I just wanted to make a note that we were advised, hopefully all Counselors received the notice that next week, on Tuesday, August 22nd, at 8:30, they've invited the educators, Counselors, and such to the school for a opening. But that week, next week, will just be, there'll be a keynote speaker, and they'll prepare that week for the kids that will be coming in on Monday. School will officially open Monday, August 28th. So I believe everyone got the email, and hopefully you can all attend as representatives to the school to support the opening on Tuesday, August 22nd. And I believe that is all for today. Thank you. So we'll move on to Town Manager's announcements, and you might notice our Town Manager is female tonight. Ms. Harnoy is filling in, because Mr. Sanangelo is on vacation.
Anne, I do not have any announcements this evening. Thank you.
Well, that was easy. Okay, we're going to move on to Subcommittee summaries. And again, we mentioned that the relevant minutes will be read at each agenda item, and if you want full copies, again, available online, generally pretty quickly, once they've been turned in, and certainly available for print versions through the Town Clerk or the Town Manager's office. First is General Government.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We met on August 2nd, in attendance with myself, Counselor Manam, Counselor Nash, Counselor Clements, Counselor DePietro, Counselor Carrasco, Town Manager Ron Sanangelo, Jackie Ryan, Ann Vinema, John Pulaski, Mike Mercetti, Paul Zodos, and Kathy LaPrairie. I didn't have the actual attendance list when I was going down to write the, write these minutes, so I might have missed one or two. The meeting began at 7:33. And most of these agenda items actually aren't on our agenda tonight, so I'm just going to, I'm going to read most of them. We accepted the minutes. Counselor Nash moved, Counselor Manam seconded, and it was unanimous. We voted to recommend Jackie Ryan as a citizen member, she's on the agenda. We, we briefly talked about David Smick, but he had, he had rescinded his, his letter to of interest, so that's in the book. But we talked a little bit more about the landfill resolution, and, let's see, we talked a little bit more about, about legal, about adding town-owned property references. We talked a little bit about, about looking at legal costs, about, let's see, sending it to Dave McKay for review, because he's our landfill lawyer, that's what Ron suggested, although Counselor Clements said that she'd rather get to go to a municipal lawyer. We turned to debating whether it's possible to make the resolution into, make, break the resolution legally binding and/or turn it into the basis of a bylaw. With some remarks on the fact that future councils could change bylaws, but it'd be binding as long as it lasted. We saw Ms. Ryan and Counselor DePietro said that they saw this as not being really helpful, as the voters have already made themselves clear on June 13th. Counselor Carrasco argued some of the public doesn't really trust the council, and we have to come to the end of this landfill, and therefore, there should be a bylaw with teeth. Counselor Clements noted we can get lawyers' input regarding if the, if the resolution is on the right track toward a bylaw. Counselor Nash said that since this started as a resolution, if we want a bylaw, it really should be a separate agenda item, and then the discussion basically petered off from there. Since item number five was to discuss the Town Council creation of an ad hoc post landfill action committee. I read it and talked, we summarized why I thought it was necessary, which it did, partly that, that was part of the, one version of the previous landfill resolution at the last meeting, and I thought it necessary to do some long-term planning, especially regarding trash collection options. Several Counselors, Ms. Ryan and Mr. Sanangelo, noted that this should be sent to the Board of Health's landfill oversight committee, since they kind of already had to do some of this stuff anyway, and objected to the idea of including out-of-town residents, with some discussion of the challenges involved in promoting more recycling, but we didn't vote on it. To discuss the grant application for Riverside Park, which was specifically for Council on Public Information without a vote, Ron noted that the council voted to set aside $100,000 from free cash to be the town's match for $388,000 grant. He applied last year for something else, but it failed, but this time, the agency running the park grants was excited. Southbridge actually applied for something, since it's been many years since we have, if ever. He expects an award notice in November. He noted the town needs to own the property, the program won't fund work on leased land. As part of the grant, Chip Dorton, who owns AO, has agreed to give the land, a little over an acre, to Southbridge for a buck. The proposal helps fulfill the master plan's goal of access to the river, and he's had some discussion with the groups on who hope to use it. Counselor Manam noted that this really should go to PND, and Counselor Clements noted that all grants and contracts need approval beforehand. And as I said, that wasn't specific, that specifically wasn't for a vote. And number seven was new business. I mentioned that we'd set up a future meeting to discuss Counselor Manam's human resources issue, which, which was specifically brought up earlier about how we want to be, we want to be careful about what we say when interviewing people for ports and commissions and jobs and things like that, and kind of go through the laws about what those are. And also about setting up something about Robert's Rules of Order as kind of a training session for, for council members and Subcommittee members and the public, if you're interested. The meeting adjourned at about 9:00. And that's it.
Thank you, Counselor.
Oh, and we do have a meeting coming up tomorrow night at 6:30. It's a one-item agenda, specifically regarding OPEB. Let's see, here it is. It is to review the actuarial services agreement with KMS Actuaries and the town of Southbridge to update needed OPEB information for fiscal 2017, in the honor of two grand, entertain a motion to vote to recommend to council for ratification. So I purposely threw it on the agenda for tomorrow night, just because we're, we're meeting for this, with the School Committee tomorrow night anyway, for you to be short and easy. That's it.
Agenda item 6B is Department of Public Works. Counselor.
DePietro.
DePietro. Right.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I may summarize. A meeting was held, joint meeting, between the DPW Subcommittee and Town Council, August 9th, 2017, scheduled at 7:00. Those in attendance, myself, Town Council Chair Denise Clements, Vice Chair Gus Steves, Counselor Nash, Counselor Morales, Counselor McKenzie, Town Manager Ron Sanangelo, Heather Blakely, head of DPW, Rosemary Scrivens, Economic Development, citizen member Stephen Lozlo, and citizen William Ryan, who brought agenda up that, well, part of our, new business. My apologies. The recommendation to vote Steve Lozlo, when as a citizen member of the Subcommittee for DPW, was unanimously approved. Happy to have Mr. Lozlo back. Agenda number two was in regards to review the Masked Works grant fund for storm drain work on Moon and Laurel Streets, and entertain a motion to vote to recommend to the Town Council for ratification. We've all received a fairly thick summary of what this grant entails. Essentially, if I may, there is a storm drain running in the United Lens Company, which we'll fill you with. The intention of this grant is to circumvent the storm drain that's running under the company, which would certainly make things a lot easier for the Department of Public Works and Water Department, if need be, which I'm sure they're all going to, at some point, when they dig this thing up, everybody puts their stuff in together, have access to it, and won't be running underneath the United Lens. It's a win-win. As far as I'm concerned, it's minimal exposure to the town, as described by both Town Manager and by Heather. And there was no opposition to it. It's a, somewhere in the neighborhood of $419,000, I believe, we're getting from the state of Massachusetts. Our exposure is less than $3,000, as described for our engineering on. And I could certainly read more into what everyone had in their packets, but I don't see where anyone could throw a stone at this, truly. And further on, if you're satisfied with that description, Madam Chair, item number three was new business. Counselor Steve asked, well, actually, pertaining, still pertaining to the United Lens, Counselor Steve asked about the, there is an easement that town owns regarding this water line. Counselor Steve brought up the legality of this, and certainly, if this goes through, the town would no longer own this easement, and that would be no void. As far as excavation for the project, Counselor Steve also brought up the point, you know, how much are we going to affect the neighbors? There would be on Moon Street, and, what's the street? As described by, by Heather, maybe three or four days of a little bit congestion, but she made it sound like it was going to be fairly quick. Agenda number three, new business. Mr. William Ryan addressed Subcommittee with concerns regarding flooding down the street at the Polish Hall and the property behind. Heather responded that she would certainly look into it, and was aware of it. Steve Lozlo, also in attendance, attested to the fact that, yeah, there's water coming down out of storm drains on surrounding streets that are all ending up in this, this one little piece of, again, the Polish Hall and, and the buildings behind. Some of it, she believed, was going to be DOT's, mass DOT's responsibilities. Some was down at Southbridge. She's on it, though, and from what I understand, after speaking with Mr. Ryan today, that they're already on their way to a solution to the problem. Further discussion regarding, where am I? This is a busy little meeting. Counselor Nash addressed the odors, which is a longstanding issue, big Y in the sewer plant. Heather tried to explain, again, it wasn't the compost pile, it's, the majority of it is coming from a sledge holding tank. At present, what I got of it, the, the summary of her explanation was, we just don't have the funds to deal with this right now. And that's pretty much where that, that item was left. Counselor Steves also brought up the issue of the expediency of mowing different areas, sides of public roads. Heather responded that she has one mower out there right now, they're doing the best they can with the funds they have and the people they have. And it was left at that. Counselor Steves also brought up the flooding on Gulfwood Road, which, last weekend, I actually met with one of the residents there, and these poor people, they've literally lost half of their yard, and I am pursuing that, starting with the state and working backwards, to try and get these folks an answer. I feel terrible for them, but it's, it's one of those issues, you've got beavers, you've got. You've got beavers, you've got a dam, and you've got a public road. And until it becomes a part of the public road, it's not really Heather's responsibility, from what I understand, which makes complete sense. So now you're back to protection of the beavers, protection of the dam. It's a very convoluted thing, and I really didn't have an answer for these people. And I promised them I would find one. I have yet to do so, but I will speak to the state. I have several calls and to our Senator and to our Lieutenant Governor, and they promised to get back to me. Heather did respond that she's moving forward the application, but, you know, her hands are tied. It's just so many folks involved. It's, and it's hard to give these people an answer. Jeez, I don't have an answer, but I'm hoping to give them one. Counselor Steve was, also brought up the roads in general, which essentially, they're almost to the point of close, if not at the end. And again, Heather responded, we just simply don't have the funds to combat this right now. And as we all know, I mean, it's the biggest complaint we hear as councils, roads, 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 and there's only so much money to go around. Counselor McKenzie stated his concerns about paving in blind spots by the high school up Ellis Road. He suggested widening the roads, perhaps pushing all the brush back that's there now, putting up signage and so forth, because that is a walkway back and forth for kids coming from, to and from Southbridge High School. Heather promised she would take a peek at it, but again, road repairs, it's a matter of funds. And I'm quite sure, and she's quite good at getting back to the Committee and giving us an answer, what she can do with the money she has. We then adjourned at 8:32 PM. All right, thank you, Madam.
Very good. Thank you, Counselor DePietro. Okay, so we have Education Human Services. We don't have a chair of that at this point, and there was no meeting. The Planning and Development, it's Counselor Claire's the chair, and...
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I do not have any minutes, and I do not have any meetings scheduled. I am still looking for one more citizen member. So if anybody is interested on serving on Planning and Development, please fill out an interest form and submit it to the Town Manager's office. Thank you.
And 6E is Protections of Persons and Property. Counselor Manna.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I did have a meeting on August 2. I am not going to read these minutes. I am not going to quickly try to summarize. I'll just give a tiny summarization. However, I'm not going to speak on each, as each agenda item comes up, because we have too many appointments in the audience. So, I mean, that just doesn't make sense to me. I would like to highlight, though, that I do have to make a correction, because Counselor Nash was there and I forgot to put him down for that meeting. I feel it's important to note that most of this agenda was in regards to appointments for our auxiliary police department. It's also important to note that Chief Woodson, he gave us a rundown of all the volunteer hours that they put in. From last year, there was 2,103 ride-along hours, 377 and 1/2 volunteer hours for more than 20 events, 332 hours for trainings and meetings, a total of 2,813 hours in 2016 that the auxiliary did give us. So I thought that was very important to note. And also, we did talk in regards to the fee changes in the schedule. These meeting minutes are a public record. They can be requested through the Town Manager's office or the Town Clerk's office, and I believe they are scanned, and they will be put on the town's website. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Counselor Steves?
Um, yeah, I just want to point out, I believe that Counselor DePietro showed up about halfway through the meeting, because I started taking voting and then we switched over to him.
But that's stated in the meeting minutes. That's filed with the Clerk's office.
I just noticed it's not on the attendance list.
Yeah, it's right in the meeting minutes. 6:45, and Counselor Carrasco arrived about five minutes after him.
You're right, okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on, Agenda item seven is swearing in and presentations, and we do not have any this evening. As we said, there'll be a presentation tomorrow evening at School Committee. And so we will go to 7A, or whatever number we want to call it, today's Citizens Forum. If anyone would like to speak to anything not on the agenda, because that's what Citizens Forum is, for items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak to items on the agenda, you just wait until the discussion time at that agenda item. It's been asked that we repeat that so people are aware, and we don't have to continually mention that to the citizens. So if anyone would like to speak to something not on the agenda, you will have five minutes. And if you request more time, the vote by the council to give you an additional two minutes is acceptable. Please come up, state your name and an address.
Hi, Jim Dobney, 85 Everett Street, homeowner. I'm here to talk about if the Town Council can look into the possibility of restoring the gates at Oak Ridge Cemetery. There's a racetrack in there every night, late at night, cars going in and out. And it's very frustrating to the people that live on the street. I'm sorry, speak a little louder. It's very frustrating to the people that live on the area with the cars going in and out of the cemetery at all times of night. I've called the police several times. They've kicked people out. And I just, you know, even if you rip out the old gates and put up some new chain-link fence gates or something and have the DPW close it up at night, it would be greatly appreciated. The only other thing is Everett Street's kind of become a speedway, with cars racing up and down, motorcycles, you name it, and a lot of kids running around in the street down there. And I'd just like to see maybe an extra patrol or two from maybe some of these fellows over here sometime soon. And that's all I've got, but if we could really look into fixing the gates. I mean, the old gates would be great, but I'd settle for a chain-link fence and a gate that you can put a chain on to close it up at night, just to keep the cars out. I mean, people are going in and out all time of night anyhow. But if you can just keep the cars out of there at night, it would be a big help to the people that live in the area. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We can get that onto a DPW agenda item also for discussion.
Madam Chair.
Counselor Manna.
To address the Everett Street, the car speeding, if you could request, or if you were to request it through the Traffic Commission, I believe it should be discussed at the Traffic Commission as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak? Name, address?
Mike Barketti, 120 Maria Avenue, Southbridge. At the recent General Government Subcommittee meeting, an agenda item came up on the landfill resolution, and it's not on tonight's agenda. And I know that Chair, Subcommittee Chairman Steves stated that subcommittees are just an advisory committee. So I was just wondering why it wasn't on tonight's agenda then? Because if the Town Council has the final word, it should be on tonight's agenda. I know that I'm in favor of a binding resolution, and I think you should continue to pursue that, because from what I understand, we have been asking DPW, or DEP, excuse me, if Casella has withdrawn their application to expand the landfill. And as of today, they have not withdrawn their expansion plans on the footprint. So I think that the landfill resolution should continue. If you want to discuss it at the next General Government Subcommittee, I'd appreciate it. It should be pursued. I would like to see it binding. I agreed with Counselor DePietro. It should have some teeth in it, and I'd like to see it brought back. I don't think we should let up so easily, just because of a newspaper report, which I thought was just a press release, really. I'm not sure I trust Casella on that issue, so, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak this evening on anything not on the agenda?
Gatorman John Joe Van Adie Highland Street. I just want to ask the Town Council respectfully, in their meeting tomorrow night with the receiver, that if we could possibly get, the receiver's been here a year. We all know the trouble that has occurred with new receiver, the leaving receiver. The plan originally was that this was originally going to be about a three-year plan, that the receiver would be in place. If we could really have a dialogue and an update from the receiver as to what does the... What are the consequences of the replacement of this receiver? What is the new timeline? And how is that going to impact any of the ongoing changes in the district? As a former school committee member, we talked a lot about the fact that it's stability, the lack of stability, that has really influenced the lack of progress in the district. And my concern will be that, while we have an interim receiver in here that is putting this staff in place with a philosophy that he might have, what is that? What are they doing in regards to the replacement of the receiver? What is that timeline? What are the characteristics that they're looking at in the receiver? And does the town have any input into the selection of this new receiver? Because really, it gets into the buy-in of the staff and the community with the receiver to move the district forward. So those are my concerns, that if you could bring them to the receiver. The other thing is that if you look at the ongoing agendas with the receiver and the School Committee, there really is a lack of content that gets information to the community and us as taxpayers. The School Committee budget is one of the largest budgets in this community, and the dollars that are being spent. Really, the issue that a lot of residents had with the former school committees was lack of transparency, or the perceived lack of transparency, that they didn't have all the information of what was going on in the district. When you see an agenda like tomorrow night's agenda, specifically for the School Committee, there really is a lack of content as to what is happening in our district. And I think that's a concern that I have as to how we're going to move forward as the town and the schools and the partnership that we have. I don't have any more kids left in the district, because they're all gone, graduated, and are doing very well. But it's the kids that we do have in the district and how, what our plans are, what our vision is as a School Committee, a town, and the receiver to move the district forward. So if you could just bring those concerns as to regular updates to the citizens? Because I know when the receiver first came on board roughly a year and a half ago, we were getting regular updates through the Board of Education to say, hey, this is where we're at. This is what's happening. There is none of that communication anymore. So it's more or less that the state is working in a vacuum, and I'd just like to have that dialogue with the council and the receiver and the School Committee as to where we're going as a district. So if you could do that and bring that forward, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Joe Van, and I think you'll, if you have a chance to attend, you'll have an opportunity also to ask some of the questions. These are some questions that have been asked directly. And I know that Receiver Johnson intends to answer a lot of what you've, or make comments on a lot of what you've questioned this evening, so hopefully there will be more.
And it's great that that's a one-time meeting with the council and the community, but it's the regular meetings going on month to month that there really is lack of content to the community.
Correct.
So I think they need to expand on that as we prepare to move forward and turn the reins back over to the elected body of the School Committee. Thank you.
Well taken. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Unless I misunderstood, the gentleman should be reminded that we have a joint...
Right. He's aware of that, yes. So he just wants to make sure, if he, you know, we can bring up some of these comments tomorrow evening as well. Just a reminder to us to be thinking about that, so I'm sure we have many questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor DePietro. Is there anybody else, any other citizen that would like to come forward and speak to anything not on the agenda?
Good evening, Council. My name is Kathy Nicola, 318 Worcester Street, citizen and taxpayer and voter and all that. I was watching the General Government Subcommittee meeting held on August 2 the other day, or this morning, actually. I was a little bored, so I thought I'd watch it in its entirety. And in the process, I noticed that Counselor Carrasco brought up an issue, which Counselor Steves mentioned this evening, regarding the Town Council's lack of trust in the people of Southbridge.
That's not what he said.
And he used as an example that, am I incorrect in that?
No, he was saying the other way around.
Or the other way around? That the people of Southbridge mistrust the Town Council.
That's what he said.
The example was that the people of Southbridge voted against the landfill, and the Town Council went ahead with it anyway. And am I correct in that? That's basically what you said, Counselor?
Yeah, he was referring to the vote back in the 1990s.
Okay.
I was referring back to the vote of the 90s in regards to what the people had thoughts in regards to the landfill. And my also point was that the citizens, in the conversations that I've had, they don't trust the council. They don't know what decisions are going to be made. So that was the point that I was trying to make.
Okay, because I was getting from that, I didn't know that you were referring to the 90s, because I was trying to rack my brain as to when I ever approached the polls and had an opportunity to vote up or down on the landfill. And the only time I ever had any recourse there was either for the vote, for the access road, or the recent vote for the expansion of the landfill. I had nothing before that that I've ever had an opportunity to vote for. It seemed to me that that was something that happened without the people of this community having an opportunity. So thank you for clarifying that with me, because I was concerned about the accountability aspect of a statement like that, considering your mantra is accountability, and it wasn't clear to me. So thank you for clarifying that for me. The other thing I'd like to make clear is that I understand that not that long ago, a reference was made to me as a citizen and a former Town Counselor, who has a debilitating disease, which I do, I have lung cancer. I just want to clarify something. I have lung cancer because I started smoking at the age of nine, not because I live on Worcester Street and am downwind of the landfill. And for anybody to make a statement like that up here is totally irresponsible and incorrect. And if you voted as a result of a statement like that, you made a mistake. One thing that you didn't make a mistake on, though, was that the person who uttered that statement was not voted on to the Town Council, and I laud you for that. Thank you very much. Good night.
Is there anybody else who would like to approach the council? Any other citizen? Okay, seeing none, we're moving on. All right, Agenda item number eight. Vote to remove Counselor Gus Steves from the Office of Vice Chair. This requires a two-thirds roll call vote of the entire council.
So move.
Second? First and a second. Do we have discussion on this? Counselor Claire?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I know that I have spoken a little, in several different avenues, about my reasons for requesting this be put on the agenda tonight. This isn't something that I feel that I want to do. This isn't something that's personal. I'm really unhappy with the current leadership on the council, based on the first and, you know, our only really meeting besides this one and the special meeting, where I feel that the removal of Ron, that the document that was drafted by Counselor Steves as a representation of the entire council was inappropriate. I feel that the statements made stating that both the Chair and the Vice Chair have been speaking about this for six months, yet it has never been brought to the Subcommittee that the Chair chaired last year, which would have been the appropriate Subcommittee to bring it to instead of coming up with an arbitrary date in order to do this. I am, I've listened for the past three weeks now, throughout all of the landfill discussions, throughout the lead shit facility, throughout all of the controversial things that have ever come up to this council in the past two years that I've been on. I've never received the amount of phone calls, the amount of emails, the amount of messages, and the type of outcry on Facebook that occurred as a result of that last meeting. The pulse of the community is that the Vice Chair and the Chair should not be in positions of power or leadership on this Subcommittee. And that's just the community. I feel that through these actions, you've also alienated our Town Manager, who for the first time is trying to move our community forward in a positive direction, who is breaking up the old boy network that everybody complains about on a daily basis in this town, and who has gotten nothing but positive reviews from every single person on this council for both of the years that he was here. for both of the years that he was here. I also don't appreciate somebody who is supposed to be in this leadership position, and although you are one voice on a council of nine, you are still, as far as the community is concerned, a representation of the town and of the town council. And I don't think that it's appropriate to state something, as Counselor Steves has stated, that he's just making things up as he goes along. These actions, these meetings, and what happened at the last meeting, these, you're taking somebody's livelihood, okay? You're taking somebody's livelihood, and you're putting that in the crosshairs. And that's not fair to somebody who has only been a positive force in this community, has brought the Latino community and finally made them feel like they're part of the solution, and they're part of this community as equals, and destroying all of that, destroying all the forward progress. And like I said, it isn't personal, but I can't watch this town take steps backwards. We've done too much in the past two years to move this town forward in a positive direction, and we can't afford it. We don't have the time to do that. Thank you.
Okay. So, I don't know if it was Counselor, I think it was Counselor de Pichu first. Let's go down the row. Counselor de Pichu.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was going to save this for council's forum, but I believe I stated where I thought all I had should be out, and the email I sent to all the councillors, and I reiterate it. We're either going to act as a team here or not. We're nine folks with nine different sets of opinions. As a team and subcommittee, we all come together. Now, some councillors, if you decide that things aren't going your way, and you want to pick up your ball and go home, and not attend subcommittee meetings, and especially senior members who refuse to chair subcommittee meetings, where your voice could really be heard and really have an effect, if you really feel as though this leadership is leading you in the wrong direction, that's the place to do it. Not grandstanding in front of the camera. So either come back and work as a team, or take your ball and go home. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Counselor de Pichu. Counselor Manon.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I respectfully disagree with Counselor Claire on a number of things. First of all, our leadership was elected by the body. They've been up here a week. I've been on council, I'm going, this is, I'm going into my second year of my third term. I've had other, seen other councillors elected to the positions that Counselor Clemens and Counselor Steves are in, who did not have the experience, who made changes that I did not like. I voiced some of my concerns to them in regards to some of those changes when I was asked about them. I do see this as a witch hunt against Counselor Steves, because he doesn't agree with some of the items. I do not think, our town manager was attacked in any way. He was, it was clearly stated in his contract, to open up negotiations, we don't offer a new contract. We want to talk to him about the contract that he has, possibly, we don't renew the contract. We open up the talks for negotiations. By not doing that is like a disservice to our town. I brought up an issue, I brought up an issue last year, and I said it at the last council meeting. There's vagueness in there when it comes to his evaluations and his performance review. We actually had to get a legal opinion that cost the taxpayers money in regards to that, and he still argues on that point.
Counselor Manon, it's on Counselor Steves, so please refrain from direct comment.
Oh, I apologize. I do not believe that what Counselor Steves was out of order. I haven't heard from anybody in regards to, but maybe one person. I don't go on the social media sites anymore for the groups that talk about all this, because, you know, I just disconnected myself from that, because I just couldn't take it anymore. Counselor Steves, you have my full support up here. I don't agree with some of the things that you say. We've had talks before, not even on council, for like our country. But you know what? I respect your opinion, and I'm glad to see the diversity in the leadership up there. So you have my full support.
All right. So Counselor Steves, you were next. If you want, then then Counselor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of points here. First of all, I think it's interesting that this is coming up, because this is two items out of hundreds that we've addressed on this council, just in this year alone, never mind the last couple of years about on it. And the vast majority of them were items that Counselor Claire and I agreed on, even when they were issues where we were the minority. On several occasions, it happened to be seven to two or six to two. And usually, the split was you and me, or it was Denise and Monique. That's the way it usually worked out. But these are two items that have been blown way out of proportion. They were, there was never any intent on my half to remove Ron. It was to open the contract, that's it. That's all there was. And it was specifically stated that in both the agenda item and the proposed letter, period. That's it. With intent to renegotiate, to keep him as manager. But I'm not going to get into that, because we beat that to death last time. Okay? The subcommittees, I personally believe that had this gone to a subcommittee or to a special meeting, it would have been just as heated as it was the other day. I actually talked to Ron about it by email, and after the fact, I told him that I thought maybe we could have sat down and talked to him about it quietly, just him and us for a little while, before going, before bringing it up. But I think the way the open meeting law is written, it had to come up to the council for some sort of a decision before we could send it to executive session. I could be wrong with that. I mean, I'm not perfect. I make mistakes. I accept that, and I learn from them. And so, also, I wanted to point out that what you talked about, and I forget the exact phrase that you used or I used, about winging it, it was specific, the context was to this particular item, not a generic context, where I don't think any of us, except maybe Counselor Clemens, have any significant experience in dealing with creating and revisiting town managers' contracts. I mean, most of us, most of us kind of saw it when we hired Ron, but we didn't really have a lot of backup between, in terms of negotiating the text of that contract. And I'd also like to point out that regardless of the people who are sitting on this council, or Ron, or me, or Denise, or honestly, anybody who's been involved in town government, none of us are replaceable. The town has a tendency of functioning anyway. That's one of the strengths of this town, is it keeps going. And I think that, I completely agree with what Counselor de Pichu said earlier, we all, despite our differences of opinion on certain issues, we all of us have to be working together. And that's one of the reasons, that's one of the reasons why, you know, I got elected, because it wasn't from one side of the community or the other. I got support from a whole bunch of people. And, you know, I got involved in, for example, the no-on-one campaign, because it was the right thing to do. And we won. And as far as the agenda item that brought this up, as far as Ron's contract, in that case, you won. I think that's it. Yeah, thanks.
To Counselor McKenzie, and then Counselor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think I made my position very clear on the last meeting regarding the way the concept of renegotiating a contract with the town manager was put forth. I felt that it was, it was actually very, very confusing. It was actually, it appeared to me, and I think many people who read it, the wording of it, was almost negative, or shall we say, it was, well, it appeared to be negative. And the town manager had an optional year. By negotiating the contract this year, we would actually eliminate that optional year. However, the contract could have been negotiated on the optional year, which would have given him an additional year, but now he has to, or he had to consider.
Could you, we need to turn it to Counselor Steves, too. This question is on Counselor Steves, like I said, to Counselor Manon.
Well, that's fine. This actually, let me just state this. This is, as far as I'm concerned, this is, you know, I have the highest regard for Counselor Steves, and that needs to be understood. I like the man as a person, and this is not a personal issue. However, the issue is that we have a nine, as my colleague Counselor de Pichu mentioned, we have a nine-member council. That notification should have been discussed with the councillors ahead of time, and then brought forward, not sent out in a packet with only a few days or a weekend. And I just felt that it was very poorly presented, and I do blame the leadership. I think that what we really need to do is, if we have a nine-member council, anytime any issue is to be discussed that's going to be pertinent to the town, what we really need to do is discuss it among ourselves, come together with a decision, with an understanding, and then go forward.
Point of order, Madam.
When I finish, sure.
No. Point of order, Mr. Steves. I will listen to your point of order and rule on it.
Okay. I just wanted to point out that what you are asking is a complete violation of the open meeting law. You cannot do that by law.
Well, then.
Excuse me.
That's what the law says. You can't.
You cannot speak until he finishes and until he.
It's against the law.
Are you finished?
Yeah.
I concur.
Okay. That means we have, what, a two-member council, then?
No.
No, it's open meeting law.
We have to put it on the agenda to debate things. That's what the law says. You can't have separate discussions going from one individual to another without, you end up creating what's called a sequential quorum. That's against the law.
That's, let's just get back. Okay.
All right.
So you can continue your suggestions, Counselor McKenzie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I still feel that it was poorly presented, no matter when it was notified, and I also feel that we really need to work together as a nine-member council, not a two-member council. And I also feel that with the town manager in his office, we have the right to go to him at any time with questions, with concerns, with suggestions. But I don't believe that we need to micromanage him. I don't need, I mean, I don't think we need to have private deliberations with him where we're going to basically tell him what we're going to be doing. I think anytime that anything's going to be done, it has to be done through the council. And any kind of mention of what suggestions, or shall we say directives, should be made need to be done as a nine-member body, not as a leadership of two. Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Claire.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I have a couple of things to address. Number, the first thing, I, my number one reason for this is the egregious mistake that was made at the last meeting. If a councillor wishes to talk about this specific item as it pertains to the leadership on the council, they should be allowed to do that. And as far as Counselor Steves, you and I agree on most things. I think that you have some of the most creative ideas, and I absolutely, you know, value your input on this council. You know, but you, what you did is not something that can be reconciled. You didn't ask for negotiations, you asked to cancel the contract. You, I have the floor. You asked to cancel the contract, and then as an afterthought added in that you would like to negotiate and continue his time here. That's what the agenda item stated. That's what the piece of paper with my name stated. And as far as, you know, you helped a lot with the no-on-one movement, but I have to question your intent when we don't have a resolution going up to council, when it's been spoken about in subcommittee for three or four meetings now.
I'll say Counselor.
Yep.
Thank you. Counselor Carrasco.
Yes, thank you. I want to address one thing that Counselor de Pichu mentioned, because he made reference in regards to someone refusing to chair a committee, and I'm not going to hide from that. It was me. And it's very simple, Counselor de Pichu, my reasoning for refusing that chairmanship, when you have two sitting councillors and one of them in leadership, go to the newspaper and make a false accusation in regards to a conflict of interest that I had nothing to do with, and then put me in that same subcommittee as chair? Listen, I'm not going to take the chance twice. When they thought about it, never had a conversation with me, never came and said, hey, what's going on here? No, they went to the newspaper and tried to damage who I am, and I'm not going to give anybody another stone to throw at me. They have enough stones that they've thrown at everyone, so I'm not going to do it. As far as being a team member, that's why I was there at that general government, subcommittee. I will be at subcommittee meetings, but I refuse to chair. I refuse to chair, and I say it again, and I know there was a communication, there was emails sent. I find it interesting that certain emails are only being sent to all nine, but I would like to see all communication in regards to when you talk to Counselor Steves, when you talk to Counselor Nash, when you talk to Counselor Manon. But again, I'm just bringing a point that was referenced to me. In regards to Counselor Steves, you're part of the leadership, you made a bad decision, you got to pay the consequence.
Okay.
Madam Chair, may I respond to that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Keep it, please, no personal comments, please, just.
Certainly not.
Keep it to the point. Thank you.
No, no, I appreciate Counselor sharing that with us, certainly events I'm unaware of, but I will reiterate, your experience is going to be sorely missed.
I'm not going anywhere. I'm still here. I'm not just going to chair a committee.
No, Counselor, on subcommittee, the events you're talking about, I promise you, I am not aware of. I promise I will make myself aware. But again, the more senior members of the council, you being one of them, would certainly put any subcommittee that you attended at a disadvantage, if you didn't. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Counselor Nash.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Excuse me, through you, just very quickly, I'd like to make a statement that this is extremely disappointing and disheartening that we're in this position facing this right now. I think it reflects very poorly on the community and our town council. However, however, as someone that supported Counselor Steves, I'm rescinding that support, and he's a good man, he's a good councillor. But when you have a failure in leadership, which I perceive this to have been, you need to make things right. So I'll be making it right by clearing my conscience with my vote tonight. The other thing I'd like to just quickly mention is, when it comes to correspondence and emails, I certainly hope that Counselor Carrasco's comment wasn't as pointed as I took it to be, because I don't think there are very many emails that I have from either Counselor Steves or Counselor Clemens, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Nash. Counselor Morales.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I must say, I agree with Vice Chair Steves. I do know that this was, the last meeting was blown out of proportion. I disagree with a lot of the councillors, but we all have. Um, I disagree with a lot of the councilors, but we all have our own decisions. Uh, I think that some of us have our personal agendas. Um, you have my full support, my vote remains the same. You are a smart guy, and I appreciate that. You do the work, you take the time, and I think that's the type of leadership we need. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? For questions or comments? Um, I, I'll make a comment, though, before I allow you, if it's okay, I mean, I prefer to let the council finish. I just wanted to, um, because it was brought up on an email, I did indeed, um, email Counselor Carrasco, and I did indeed, um, CC all councilors, because I felt that the, the content of the email was in regard to subcommittees, which we may have to switch around and change up, because we don't, with having only, uh, we have nine, we'll be down to eight if he doesn't, if he chooses not to, uh, participate. So we've been at seven or eight for subcommittees over the last few years with various, um, personal and, and, uh, health issues. So I sent out a very, I thought, um, balanced, uh, email, just mentioning that the previous, uh, council meeting, he had mentioned he didn't want to chair EHS subcommittee. Uh, I, I understood his concerns, I'd like to ask him as a senior member of council to, with experience in running meetings, to take the responsibility of one subcommittee. A text dated July 13th that I sent stated, "Gus and I are working on subcommittees, you have an option of chairing P and D or EHS, please advise." When we did not hear back from him, we chose EHS, it has a broad range of departments, including Board of Health, Library, Veterans, and School, plus more. If there are any areas that might cause a conflict, as many of us may experience in our time on council, as I've been experienced." I didn't put that in, that's my words now. "The option for abstaining or recusing is always available. There is a substantial workload that exists as a counselor, as you know, we need to do our part, we all need to do our part. I point out, the past few years, the council's been lacking members for health and personal reasons. It was appreciated that Counselor Claire chaired two subcommittees this past year." Counselor, this year Counselor Mackenzie also noted in a letter and email to us that he has some health concerns and was planning on scaling back his attendance, and that's understandable. It just means the rest of us need to fill the voids that we're elected to do. I'm asking that if you still do not want to chair EHS, then you chair P and D, and the vice chair and I will make adjustments to make sure all committees are set. New council members deserve time to get acquainted with the procedures and general workings of council before being tasked with a chair position. I point out that each has already been assigned as members to at least two subcommittees and has been general, as has been the general practice even before my time on council. Regards, Denise." So I did send that out, I did CC everybody. Um, it is a general information email, it's not a debate or an, uh, uh, an email that would, it's disseminate information, set an appointment and agenda, uh, or whatever, and that's basically what we were trying to do when the assistant at the office said that they were going to be needing an EHS meeting pretty soon. So I don't think this should have offended anybody, I apologize if it did. I felt that it was important that we are all on the same page when it came to subcommittees. And you're right, I'm sure that I don't have privy to many emails that are sent between others and, nor, nor do I want to, or that perhaps you don't have the ones that say, "Did you set that appointment up with Karen?" "'Cause I didn't." And I say, "No, I forgot, I'm sorry, and I'll, I'll do it now." So, you know, I'm just want to be very clear, that I felt inclusive, inclusive in the process of subcommittees when I sent a text July 13th, two days after our appointments up here. And I felt, um, inclusive when I did what I did a few days, uh, last week in order to try to get our leadership, all of us are leaders, and we all need to do the job as according to charter and our, and our rules and regs, that the subcommittees are disseminated, or not, that's the word I've been using lately, sorry, are evenly distributed, I believe is what it says, amongst the council members. And we're trying to evenly distribute the workload up here. But we're clear and very fine with taking on extra work if that's what we need to do. Counselor Steves and myself attend many, many, if not most, subcommittee meetings as it is, so, um, we'll just continue that. So, thank you, Counselor, I mean, Mr. Marquetti.
Uh, Mike Marquetti, 120 Maria Avenue. Um, I'm not here to defend the town manager, I know I've, I've had problems with him in the past as well, but, um, I know he is your employee. However, I think it's, it's, it's a simpler issue than this. I think, I think just the way it was handled, I think that Counselor Steves making this, uh, San Angelo resolution along with the council chair, uh, I think they overstuffed their authority by doing that. Um, they should have talked to the town councilors beforehand, before going forward with that, with that resolution. And so I think that Counselor Steves should step down, but I also think the, the council chair shares responsibility for that, and she should also step down. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to speak on this agenda item?
Hi, Kathy Nicola, again, 318 Worcester Street. Um, I feel, um, unfortunately, uniquely capable of talking about this, having done little time on the council myself, having done more than enough time negotiating town managers' contracts. I'm a little disappointed that the manager isn't here tonight, because I wouldn't want to say this behind his back, I would like him to hear this. I have to say that I'm impressed with a council who the manager had no problem calling well-meaning volunteers last year, and sitting at home and being totally insulted by that statement. Well-meaning volunteers, you're his boss. He stepped out of bounds by making that comment, and it says a lot about how he views you and how you've allowed him to run this community. He is the town manager. He is your subordinate. And if he doesn't care for you renegotiating or re-looking at his contract and feigning this sensitive attitude, then he's not much of a professional, and you need to re-look at who you are. This community voted you in. We didn't vote for the manager, we voted for you to be our representatives and to speak on our behalf. I'm disappointed in this, this evening, for another reason. You need to work together. You need to understand what your leadership was trying to tell you. Maybe they didn't communicate it clearly, or maybe you chose not to hear it clearly. However, they are responsible for making sure that your town manager, our town manager, is doing right by us. That's the only thing you need to concern yourselves with, is that the town manager does right by this community. Because we're your boss, and that's what I expect of you, that's what I expected of me for the nine years that I sat up there. A lot of people didn't agree with me, a lot of people did. Whether you liked my style or not, I'm sorry, but I never took my eye off the ball, and it was the community that meant more to me than the manager's feelings. And I, I'm truly disappointed that you're missing it at this time. So I'd like you to reconsider. I like Gus Steves, I like all of you, but you're being a little oversensitive. Your town councilors in Southbridge, you better get over being sensitive, and you better get over it real soon. Thank you.
Is there anyone else before we, oops. Counselor Carrasco, a hand or not?
My hand was up.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. For what it's worth, the town manager isn't here tonight, because he took a vacation that the whole council was aware of ahead of time, although a meeting was still scheduled. Um, as a council of nine, we are his boss. Um, that is why we have, you know, we had very lengthy discussion, and, you know, a lot of work went into, um, you know, evaluation, goals and objectives. Um, Counselor Clements actually, you know, came up with a new evaluation form that was a really, really important and, and good tool, um, for us to use in that. Being his boss as a council doesn't mean that two people should be driving the ship and having only their views expressed. Two people on the council are two-nines of this council. Um, and yes, we are elected to represent the people. That's why, you know, we're talking about, like, there, there's an online petition with 200 and something signatures, asking for, for the removal of this leadership because of what has happened. It isn't a sensitivity, it's caring about my community and wanting to move forward instead of taking more steps back. And I think that that is the absolute most important thing, and holding, you know, the manager accountable for what he's doing, that's what we've been doing for, for myself, two years now. Um, the other thing, um, James, or James Satilli couldn't be here tonight, and he asked me to read something, and I'm going to read it right now. Um, "I'm writing these lines after witnessing one of the most blatant and revealing Machiavellian attempts by a small-town council clique to provide the citizens of Southbridge with a destabilized council-town-manager administrative system. I'm sure every reasonable individual who also watched our most recent attempt to clamber out of the landfill mess, which was in the past created by an undoubtedly unwise old-boy network and shoresighted oligarchic class that had its day at its sun. We have had difficulty stifling short-term indignation before taking some time to analyze what rose from the catastrophic and remarkably craven conspiracy led by the chair and vice-chair along with their Mary Poppins-like Marionette follower prior to the last July 24th town council meeting. The endeavor was at first explained as an innocent two-person incidental behind closed-door conversation for ready reference. See U.S. en masse Supreme Court rulings on conspiratorial intent slash guilty mind rationale to notify the reasonable person that the closed-door incidental conversation had an additional purpose to attempt to session. The two councilors compounded their pretext by indicating after a lengthy discussion that this had been going on for some six months. What a clever juxtaposition to value, validate their so-called original, their original incidental conversation to one that, as stated by the chair, was purportedly in the hopper for several months with several other councilors outside a subordinate committee and/or full council session, open meeting law violation. This activity has since been denied by several councilors. The gang of three can't have it both ways. In fact, 30% of the council members were not on the board prior to the last election. Come again, what were they thinking, we all know. Let us gather around and consider the natural extension of this scenario. The chair will be gone in a year, and the town manager could be if he chooses to exercise his two-year contract options and remain beyond the president chair's tenure. This is without a doubt poor planning by your so-called head-of-government leadership. What will be accomplished by the fruit of what appears to be a so-called fair victory? The gang of three has inflicted such an unreparable and overwhelming toll on the process concerning future management employee negotiations, which will be tantamount to the inevitable defeat with each applicant. The heavy toll inflicted by attacking an individual who in good faith has surpassed the council's evaluation process negates any true sense of achievement. Our future contract bargaining options will more than likely be limited in scope and practice. The remaining councilors, who are genuinely committed to good government for Southbridge, must act with significant force tonight, so that each of them will understand that they are in theory required to represent the principle of common good, or they will be open to other forms of government demanded by the voters, who comprehend that the town council form of government may way be failing our collective self-interest. Advice to the council, when the red light on the TV camera's on, do not forget that you must do the right thing and vote to remove the present leadership, or you will more than likely dance to future political disadvantage. Do not let that momentary ego experience lift you out of the realm of common sense. Please do not re-establish a losing contest like that between Athens and Sparta again. Learn from history, don't repeat the inevitable struggle you will create from a poor decision to re-educate the chair and vice-chair on what really matters to the citizens of Southbridge. I wish you well on this deliberative journey that will have longstanding ramifications for this community. Do the right thing. Best regards, Jim, James Satilli." Thank you.
Anyone else? Oh, Counselor Manna, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I need to respond to a comment that was made about the current leadership control on the Since I've been on council, I've kept my mouth shut, and I'm tired of it. I've heard rumors in the past, rumors that I believe to be true, in regards to past leadership on the council wanting certain people removed from their positions. Our chief of police, our DPW director. Certain leadership on this council that didn't want promotions to move forward. That was wrong. I shouldn't have kept my mouth shut then. I should have said something. Sit here and say that these two, our control on our town manager is an outright lie. For me to sit here and say that we've had past leadership control our town manager is not a lie, and I'll swear on any Bible, and I will swear on my children's life about that, because it's not a lie. Counselor Steves and Counselor Clements have done nothing wrong, nothing whatsoever. They did what Ron San Angelo's contract afforded them to do. And if you don't like something that's on, that's on the agenda, that comes to you in your packet on a Thursday night, and you can get it on a Friday morning before noon, and you have the entire weekend to get ahold of people in regards to this. I know Counselor Steves available, Counselor Clements, Ron San Angelo, if you have questions, they're all approachable via email or phone calls in regards to something that's on the agenda. I haven't liked things that were on this agenda that were a surprise to me before, but you know what? I made the phone calls, I sent the emails, I asked the questions, if it was that much of a concern. But to say that these two are up here controlling our town manager is a flat-out lie. We've had past leadership do that very thing. We've had people resign because of it. If you think I'm lying, I'm not. And that's all. I'm, I'm just tired of it. And I vote to move the question.
Anyone want a second?
A second, yeah.
Okay. All right, uh, we're going to do a roll call to move the question.
Counselor Mackenzie?
Let's do with the question.
Yes. Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Morales?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor O'Clare?
No.
Counselor Carrasco?
No.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor DePietro?
Yes.
Seven yes, two no.
Okay, we'll go for immediate vote on the question. The question is vote to remove Counselor Gus Steves from the office of vice-chair. It requires a two-thirds roll call vote of the entire council. It's already been first and seconded, and we'll do, as I said, a roll call for this.
Counselor Manna?
No.
Counselor Morales?
No.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
No.
Counselor O'Clare?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yeah, no, no.
Counselor DePietro?
I'd like to request a repeated, please.
Vote to remove, vote to remove Counselor Gus Steves from the office of vice-chair.
Ma'am, I thought we just removed that from the agenda.
No, we're just moving the question, debate stops. We chose to move, so now you can, whatever vote you wanted to do.
No.
Thanks.
Counselor Mackenzie?
Yes.
It's five-four, motion doesn't pass.
Four yes, five no.
Okay, now let's move on to the rest of the-
Thank you.
Thank you for serving, Mr. Steves, Counselor Steves. All right, agenda item number eight, uh, number nine, excuse me. Vote to confirm the appointment of Jaclyn Ryan as citizens' member to the general government subcommittee for a one-year term effective immediately through July 31st, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Do this, uh, just show of hands, all those in favor? Moving on, agenda item 10, vote to confirm the appointment of Steve Lozo as citizens' member to the Department of Public Works Subcommittee for a one-year term effective immediately through July 31st, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
All those, oh, sorry, discussion?
Thank you. Shouldn't there be something else at the end of this? Because didn't we vote in the past to have them remain on until there was, um, this position was filled?
To July 31st or until a replacement could be found.
This should be read differently.
Yeah, I forgot about that.
Do we need to make an amendment?
Do we have that in the original?
Can we make that amendment?
In the council rules, it's, yeah, it used to be, um, we changed it in council rules and regs. Excuse me, give me a sec, and I can, do you have yours on? Hang on, everybody's got it. Yeah, there was a, you caught that?
I'm sorry, also, Madam Chair, I didn't catch that with, um, Jackie Ryan either, so I apologize.
Right, so we can. Do you have yours? Yeah, I realize that's what yours says, but that's not what the, um, stuff on citizens' members, we had changed it at one time. We had changed it at one time. Now, council members in appointment with our charter, yeah. I can't find it in there. We got a little bit in the charter.
We have an old agenda.
You know what I'm talking about. Right, but we usually add the or until. That was the one thing that changed when the, a long time ago. Yeah, we, I mean, we can keep it and we can then extend their, extend if they want to. Councilor Manah, if you'd like. I know, we're all looking. Did we find it? Where's it?
Foray. It states, appointments of citizen members to council subcommittees shall be for terms ending July 31st or until new members are appointed.
Okay, so let's make that correction. Can we get an amendment?
If that's the case, since it's, since it's already in the rules, do we need to? Or does this, does this, which supersedes, rules or the agenda votes?
The, well, the, what we voted on. So we only voted on, on the first agenda to July 31st, so, which was unanimous, so we can go back and amend that one as well.
Okay, so I'll go back and...
Do you want to remove your motions? Anybody want to remove the motions on Steve Lozlo?
I made, did I, first or second? I'll remove whatever, whichever it was.
Okay. Does anybody want to make an amendment to number nine that we've already voted on? Or to rescind, rescind the...
I would like to make that, yes, I'd like to rescind that.
Okay, so, this would be to rescind that agenda item?
Just to clarify.
And then we will vote it appropriately.
Right.
Thank you. It's all good to work together. All right, so this one is to rescind that agenda item. So it would be to rescind the appointment of Jaclyn Ryan. So, all those in favor? Oh, did we get?
Nope.
Okay, just checking. All right, nine. And then the new agenda item is to...
I move that we confirm the appointment of Jackie Ryan as Citizen Member to the General Government Subcommittee for a one-year term effective immediately through July 31st of 2018 or until a new member is appointed.
Second.
Thank you. All right. All right, all those in, we have a second, all those in favor? And we are back to unanimous. Let's move on. And I'll read this one correctly, so the motion will count. Vote to confirm the appointment of Steve Lozlo as Citizen Member to the Department of Public Works Subcommittee for a one-year term effective immediately through July 31st, 2018 or until a new member is appointed.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor? It is unanimous, nine. Thank you. All right. Number Eleven. Now, the next are candidates, wait, excuse me, I'll take that back. This is Constable, right. Vote to confirm the appointment of Camille Mojica of Southbridge as Constable for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion? Just comment that the manager mentioned this. This was a general government item?
I know, it's PPP.
This was PPP. Constable was PPP. Did you read that one?
And I already stated early when I was, I summarized my minutes, that I'm not gonna go through each appointment.
No, no, I realize that. But this was for Constable, so I didn't know if you had anything to add.
No, 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 for Constable, no.
Recommended by the Town Manager.
Everything, everything from the PPP was recommended by the PPP to come up to Subcommittee. It was unanimous. It wasn't, there was no, nothing negative came out of that meeting.
Yeah, I would also add that it was, it was recommended by both the Town Manager and the Police Chief, too.
Right, okay. Just want to be clear...
Madam Chair, can we have some order in regards to somebody talking at once? Everybody's talking, I'm confused.
Certainly, Councilor Correct, totally noted. Thank you. So, one at a time, please, and when I recognize you, thank you. Okay, so, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Item Number Twelve. Vote to confirm the appointment of Rodrigo Aurora of Worcester as Auxiliary Police Officer for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2020. And we have our Police Chief here, Ms. Chief Woodson, if you would like to make any comments about the following appointments.
Sure, if I could, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the council. Thanks for having us here tonight. Being that we have nine candidates, if I could just quickly go over a brief summary of the program, then as you call each one with your permission, if they could just come stand here, and I'll have them go around at the end all nine if that works. Thank you, Madam Chair. Every single one of the gentlemen here before you tonight has completed the 312 hours of training required to be an Auxiliary Police Officer of the community. And as many of you heard me say in the Subcommittee, this is no easy task. This is usually two nights a week, three to four hours each night, and every Saturday for the full day, and that goes on for several months. These men have also paid the tuition, which, depending on which academy it is, can be a thousand dollars, twelve hundred dollars, nine hundred dollars. Equipment, books, by the time it's all said and done, it's a several-thousand-dollar venture that these men choose to do on their own time and on their own dime, their own money. Does not cost the town a cent. A little bit about the program, we have seventeen Auxiliaries right now. We like to keep that number at about thirty. With the addition of these nine, we'd have twenty-six, and I'd be looking to add a few more in the near future. Some of the turnover is just with Auxiliary Police Officers getting other law enforcement jobs on a full-time basis. So they start here in our community, many of them come and work eventually full-time for our Police Department, or they go to other departments. Just, and Council Manah kind of already touched on it, so I'll be really quick on this. In 2016 alone, the men and women of the Auxiliary Police for our department put in about twenty-one hundred hours just riding along cruiser time, and that's all donation to the town. They've worked about three-hundred-and-seventy-eight hours in events, special events, Relay for Life, when we did the Southbridge Fest, or when we used to do the Southbridge Fest, Memorial Day Parade, you know, VFW, Fourth of July Road Race, the list goes on and on. Trainings and meetings and other three-hundred-and-thirty-two hours a year, for a total of just about two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirteen hours that the current men and women, not the new people coming in tonight, but have volunteered for the community in 2016. So each of them all come highly recommended by me. We've done background checks, it's at no cost to the town. I highly recommend each and every one of them. So as far as the first gentleman, who's number twelve on the agenda tonight, he's fluent in Portuguese and Spanish, and he's been an Auxiliary Officer with the Charlton Police Department for the last two years. I highly recommend him for appointment to Auxiliary.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, so moved. We already took that. Who's got it? One at a time. Raise your hand. Thank you, Councilor Nash and Councilor Steves. Okay. All those in favor? Unanimous. By all present, thank you, nine. All right, so we're gonna hold them up and keep going. Correct? That's what you'd like?
If it's okay with you, Madam Chair.
Yep. Just want to make sure. Vote to confirm the appointment of Ted Beba of Worcester as Auxiliary Police Officer for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2020.
Second.
Discussion.
And just a brief background on Mr. Beba, he has a Bachelor of Science in Criminal Justice. He's a master's degree candidate currently. He works as a security officer, and he's also fluent in Albanian.
He's got fans in the audience. All right, any discussion or questions? All those in favor? Unanimous by none. Thank you. Agenda Item Fourteen. Vote to confirm the appointment of Christopher Buffham of Oxford as Auxiliary Police Officer for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
If I could, Madam Chair, Mr. Buffham has five years as a Coast Guard Reserve, currently works as a security officer, and I highly recommend him for appointment as an Auxiliary.
Questions? All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you, nine. Agenda Item Fifteen. Vote to confirm the appointment of Patrick Clemmons of Worcester as Auxiliary Police Officer for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Through you, Madam Chair, Mr. Clemmons has a bachelor's in psychology and criminal justice. He was in the U.S. Army Reserve for six years. He's currently employed as a security officer. I highly recommend him for appointment.
Questions? All those in favor? Unanimous, nine. Thank you. Vote to confirm the appointment of John Joe Van Junior of Southbridge as Auxiliary Police Officer for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Max can decide that one. Go ahead.
If I could. Mr. Jovan was a former Police Chief in Brimfield and Hall, and he's obviously highly qualified to be an auxiliary with our department. Currently works for a Special Investigation Unit with Progressive Insurance, held that job for about six years. He's a part-time police officer for Anna Maria College, and he's currently enrolled at Assumption College. Highly recommend him for appointment.
Questions, comments? Very good, all those in favor? Unanimous, nine. Agenda Item Number Seventeen. Vote to confirm the appointment of Arthur Paradise of Charlton as Auxiliary Police Officer for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Paradise has had a management role at a large supermarket since 1995. This is his first, like, an entry-level position in law enforcement, and I highly recommend him.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, nine. Eighteen. Vote to confirm the appointment of Alexandra Sini of Dudley as Auxiliary Police Officer for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
If I could, Mr. Sini is currently a Douglas Police Department dispatcher. He has a semester left until he gets a criminal justice degree. Highly recommend him for appointment.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous by all present. Thank you, nine. Agenda Item Nineteen. Vote to confirm the appointment of Kevin Van Zat of Belchertown as Auxiliary Police Officer for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Van Zat has an Associate's Degree in Criminal Justice. He's currently a part-time dispatcher for the Belchertown Police Department, and he's a volunteer firefighter. Highly recommend him for appointment.
Questions, comments? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you, nine. Number Twenty. Agenda Item Twenty. Vote to confirm the appointment of Matthew Hippel of Westbrookfield as Auxiliary Police Officer for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Hippel's currently a part-time warrant police officer. This is more of an entry-level position, also for him to further his career in law enforcement. I'd highly recommend him for the position of Auxiliary.
Any questions, discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, nine. Thank you.
Thank you, members of the council.
Congratulations, everyone. He missed one. He was going for the fart. Congratulations to everyone. All right, very good. Moving along, Agenda Item Number Twenty-One. Vote to confirm the reappointment of Martin Peterson to the Conservation Commission for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on this item? Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous, nine. Agenda Item Number Twenty-Two. Vote to confirm the reappointment of Colin Mockla as Auxiliary Firefighter for a one-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Just one point to these two item numbers, Twenty-Two and Twenty-Three. I'm Deputy Fire Chief Paul Normden. Council, thank you very much for bringing these up for reappointment. These are standing members within our department. They are Auxiliaries. They assist us at fire scenes with canteen work, passing out water, rolling hose, and et cetera. Colin Mockla has been on our department for quite some time, and also Cory Lemon is also, is working towards paramedic degree. I'd like to see that, at this point, he be reappointed, so we can actually maybe have him be an appointment at some day future for the Career Department. So, thank you very much. So move on.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. So we had a...
We had a motion.
Yeah, we had a motion in a second. Any other discussions? We're moving backwards. All right, seeing none. All those in favor? It's unanimous, nine. Thank you. Vote Twenty-Three. Vote to confirm the reappointment of Cory Lemon as Auxiliary Firefighter for a one-year term effective immediately through June 30th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on... All those in favor? Okay. Unanimous, none?
Thank you very much.
Very good. Okay, Agenda Item Number Twenty-Four. Vote to ratify the new fee schedule for inspections as submitted by the Director of Inspection Services in accordance with the town's Code of Bylaws and as presented to council as part of the FY 2018 budget.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Discussion on this item. Councilor Nash?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. May I just step back and ask? If I recall this correctly, this is actually not a required ratification by council, because these fees are set by the Director of Inspection Services and the Town Manager?
As I understand it, that's how it was explained to us, and certainly we can either have our acting or our inspectional officer.
Thank you.
Yes, the reason I brought this to the council is because we initiated it at the council through the budget process, and in talking with Mr. Sanangelo, we felt that it was righteous to keep it there, keep the council informed, because it was part of the budget process brought forward. So we decided to keep it before the council.
Councilor Steves?
So then, in that case, Andy, for the, for the sake of the public who's watching, could you explain a little bit about why you're doing this and what it'll actually mean to the people?
When I brought Casey on board as my Assistant Commissioner, I gave him two boons, if you will. I asked him to look at the salaries of the department and make sure that they were appropriate to where they should be. And thereafter, I asked him to look at our fee schedule and specifically said, "I do not want to be the most expensive dog in the country, but in reality, we have to keep in competition, not competition, we have to be comparable to those communities around us." So we found two of our stipend-paid people were getting paid approximately ten to eleven dollars an hour. They are professional people, licensed people, requiring CEUs. So we called around, tried to make their salaries comparable to other salaries in the, in the Auburn, Charlton, Lester, Dudley. They were making approximately fourteen thousand a year, and comparables were in the twenty-to-thirty-thousand-dollar range. So I came to the budget process requesting a two-step process to bring these two stipend-paid employees up to comparable to the, to the neighboring towns. Step one was halfway there, and we would look at our permit fees to ensure that we could cover the cost of bringing these people up to comparable pay without detriment to the town. So that led us to the permits. We looked at the permits, we compared them to the same towns, and we were not significantly lower, but lower enough to say, you know, something we can adjust fees without doing harm to the citizens or significant harm to the citizens. Again, not wanting to be the most expensive town in the, in the community, and I think we succeeded in keeping it below that. But we anticipate that we will more than cover the amount of the increase for the two-stipend employees.
More discussion? So, Mr. Pelletier, the fees though, in terms of while we want to be comparable in our employees' compensation, the fees to make that such, where are we comparable-wise to these fees? How are these fees in comparison to the neighboring areas that you did your research on?
We are right in the middle. Some are a little higher than us, some are a little lower. An additional facet that we looked at was what we actually commit to instituting these permits. So, assessing approximately fifty dollars an hour, that covers salaries, benefits. Assessing approximately fifty dollars an hour, we went through the whole list and said, "All right, this is an hour, this is four hours, this is two hours," between evaluating the permit application and doing the required inspections. Some of them, he came to me with numbers and I said, "No way, too high." He said, "But that's what it costs us." I said, "I don't care, we're not going to put that on our citizens." So we cut back, we scaled back on some of those. But generally, we tried to keep it at the cost that it would actually cost the town of Southbridge.
Anybody else? Seeing no other discussion, we'll just do a show of hands on this. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous? Thank you, Ms. Pelletier.
Counselors, I thank you.
Agenda item number twenty-five, vote to authorize the Town Manager to submit the Mass Works Program grant application on behalf of the town of Southbridge and accept Mass Works grant funds for storm drain work on Moon and Laurel Streets.
So moved. Second.
Discussion on this item. Any, no one has any questions then?
If I may, just for the sake of, for the sake of the town's understanding, can you talk a little bit about it there, Karen? Do you have enough background on it to do so?
I have some comments. DPW Director couldn't be here this evening, but I'll just read a couple of her comments on it. The stormwater drain line installation bidding and the oversight engineering assistance is an estimated cost by tie-in bond. If the grant is received by the town, the DPW will put together a scope of work, get quotes to determine the actual costs, and determine if all or some of the work can be done by the DPW. Now, the engineering reimbursed by the grant cannot cost more than ten percent of the grant. I know there were some concerns about that. The DPW will work to keep the cost below this amount if possible. And any additional funds... This says under three thousand, but I think it would be, that would be over the three thousand, likely would be able to be paid from either the DPW operations budget or from the Chapter 90. Now, if we do not get, if the town does not get the grant, there will still be costs to the town that will likely not be covered under the DPW budget or Chapter 90. The existing storm water line is in need of repair. The line is cracked and failing under the building. So the line will need to be repaired. The estimated cost for this repair is up to thirty thousand. Since this is not in a road, Chapter 90 funds cannot be used. In addition, this sizing cost for a drainage project is not included in the DPW operation budget. Now, the town does have an easement for the existing storm drain line that's under the building. And after review of the cost estimate, it appears, I don't know if there's a question about this, there's enough asphalt that has been included to repave curb to curb after construction is completed of the disturbed area, approximately five hundred and twenty LF of roadway. So those were the comments that Heather had said. I don't know if you wanted a little bit general about the Mass Projects Grant itself.
If you want to, if you want to explain it, I mean, obviously, most of us were there, but this is more for, so that people out there know what they're doing.
Did you attend to any news on it?
I didn't.
Because I certain, so this grant is a way to pay for this infrastructure, which is hundreds of thousands of dollars that needs to be taken care of. It happens to be below the United Lenses building beneath, as we were saying, the pipe is failing, that we have an easement on. We were at the meeting and it was described in detail as Chairman DePietro had expressed in his minutes.
Just to add to that, when some committee was hammering Heather as far as the budget on this, she did go so far as to say, "It, not only might it be less than anticipated and maybe no cost at all." She seemed fairly confident in that.
The big, the big thing to understand is that this Mass Works Grant is a way to have projects like this paid for and not have to be paid back. So this is actually, this is completely, I hate to use the term free, but it is actual grant money that unlike a matching grant or reimbursement grant or those types of things, this is money that the state puts aside for large infrastructure projects that will help with economic development or economic continuation. In this case, United Lenses is doing work with their building and of course, they're a manufacturer here in our community with a large employee base and all. So it's, it's a positive thing. Mass Works, usually this type of a project would help, they would help this type of a project because it's very important to keep economic growth and status in a community. So, it helps us, the community, not have to pay for it. Obviously, it will take care of a recurring problem, that existing problem underneath the building that's there and create new opportunities for growth in the future. So, does that kind of describe the...
I think so.
Thank you, Vice Chair Steves. So, that's as we understood it from the meeting. The grant is, it's public information. If anybody needs a copy of this or anything, you can certainly go into the Town Manager's office if you want to know what all the... They're hoping to start the work next spring, get all the engineering and all, and actually start that work, I think it was by April or so, and get it done early, early part through the summertime, so that the rest of the project can move forward.
I just wanted to add also that Heather mentioned at the meeting that this project is going to, obviously, it'll disrupt traffic on Moon and Laurel Streets. It might have a little bit of an impact on that section of Worcester Street, but she was saying that, I guess Worcester Street's wide enough so it shouldn't have too much of an impact because of where the catch basins are. So, I just thought I'd throw that in.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. Oops, yes, Counselor Nash?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I just want to make sure we were extremely clear that this is just a grant application at this stage. These funds have not been made available to the town. I didn't hear it expressed quite that clearly.
It is an application and then we would have to accept the grant once it's bestowed upon this.
Thank you.
So, there is a chance we won't get it.
Right.
All right. I'll do a roll call on this, though. I'm sorry. Occasionally, when it's something that, you know, in this case, it's for the state grant, it's important, I think, to have a roll call.
Counselor Morales?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor O'Clair?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor DePietro?
Yeah.
Counselor McKenzie?
Yes.
Counselor Mena?
Yes.
And yes.
Okay, so we do come to one consideration. Agenda item number twenty-six was Citizens Forum. If anyone arrived late and did want to speak, because you thought Citizens Forum was at the end, we did move it to the beginning. So if anybody else would like to take this opportunity, I will allow it this evening. And if not, we'll move forward. Anybody else want to speak on Citizens Forum to anything that wasn't on the agenda? Did anybody want to speak at Citizens Forum to anything that's not on the agenda? Okay. Then we will move on. Counselors Forum, Agenda item twenty-seven. We're going to start on the left side here, so Counsel Claire?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. I don't have much this evening. I did, I did receive a message from a resident, Mark Zarazinsky of 79 Eastford Road in Southbridge. And he, he wrote me this. Can you please read this at the appropriate time at the 8:14:17 council meeting? I have some questions and one request. One, what's the status of the Southbridge Industrial Park? Are there any businesses at the park? Has there been any interest by any businesses wanting to move there? And too many town res... Then he spoke a little bit about the Citizens, the Forum, which we've already discussed tonight, so I won't rehash that. And I thought maybe we could just, you know, like really quickly address that specifically with the industrial park. I just lost it, hold on. And if I'm, if I'm, I know Mr. Sanangelo's not here tonight, but there's one, there's one business, the welding business, that's up there now, as well as the C and D recycling. Yeah. And then, through the master plan, if my memory serves me correct, there was one or two more lots available somewhere up there?
My idea.
Okay.
Depends on the buildability of the driveway situation and whether there's access to the back lots.
And I guess, I just wanted to read that because he asked me to and, you know, a little update to the community isn't the worst thing. But that's all I have. Congratulations to all of the police officers this evening and have a great week.
Thank you, Counsel Carrasco.
I just got two things this evening. First, I just want to announce that the House of Destiny Church is providing 2017 Back-to-School Family Fund Block Party, where there will be giving away three hundred rostering backpacks. There will be two bike giveaways, there'll be moon bounces, there'll be games, arts and crafts. There'll be much more things happening. That's this Saturday, August 19th, from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM, 45 Charlton Street. And then the other thing that I have is, I've been in contact with Ms. Nancy Ortiz, who is one of the leaders of the New England Handball Association. And they have scheduled a handball tournament at Henry Street at September 9th, 2017, from 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM. It's at Henry Street. They've built part of the monies that they, the town decided to do with the Recreation Department was to build a handball court in regards to, one of the spots where there was just pavement. So they are going to be having their first tournament from 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM on September 9th. That's all I have.
Thank you. Counsel Morales?
Thank you. So, Counselor Carrasco beat me to the punch. I just wanted to thank also Nancy Ortiz for giving back to our community and also congratulate our new officers in town. Thank you.
Counselor DePietro?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, not to overburden the subject, but if there is any member of this council that feels as though they're being personally attacked by anyone, I'd like to be made aware of it. Short of that, there's nine of us here with nine different opinions. If it was a perfect world, we'd all do it my way and they'd just beat me here. But there's nine of us because we all think of each other, different experiences, different thought processes. We all view the same material and come up with different conclusions. And as hammering us out as a team, we come out with the best that we possibly can for the good of the town. So please, please, let us all get back to work for what we were elected for and why we joined this cause to begin with. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel DePietro. Counsel McKenzie?
Yes, Madam Chair. I received a letter in the mail today from Casella. I guess most of us have already received it, announcing that they will not pursue the development of any further capacity that exists in the Southbridge Recycling and Disposable Park, more commonly known as the Southbridge Landfill. And says that the facility will continue to operate until December 31st of 2018 unless the capacity is exhausted prior to that. The, just want to make it aware that while that is taking place, that has absolutely nothing to do with our trash pickup. And I don't want our citizens to get nervous about, are we going to be losing our trash pickup as well? So I'm just making that statement. And also, I think, since we're, I'm talking about trash, I think that while Casella does a relatively good job in picking up the trash, occasionally, things fall out because they're using mechanical lifts to empty the garbage. And things do fall out on the, on the streets. I'm not blaming Casella, I'm blaming technology. But I would ask our townspeople to police the front of their areas, police the front of their homes, especially on Trash Pickup Day. Go out with a broom, a little dustpan, and clean up your area. This is your, this is your part of Southbridge and you need to take pride in it. We want our town to look as beautiful as it possibly can be. This is a phenomenal town. It really is a beautiful town. And we have so much positives going forward. I think we need to take pride in our town. So I'm asking the citizens to, I know, I know that Counselor Clements and other councils have gone out and cleaned up the streets during the cleanup day that we have once a year or twice a year or as often as... So I'm asking, though, if we could, I'm going to clean up my area and I walk up South Street and walk my dog up there. And I do take a bag, by the way, I do clean up after my dog. And I'm asking people to just clean up the front of their homes because the South Street looks like, looks like trash afterwards, so. And I'm sure all the other streets look the same way after the pickup is done, so we, we need to take pride in our, our streets. Thank you very much.
Counselor Mena?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. Thank you for Mr., Counsel McKenzie for suggesting that people sweep up their areas. That's, that's a really good suggestion. And, yeah, I don't think it was like for six years, but it was close to six years once a month. So, but no, it's, it's a daunting task, never-ending task. Anyways, I too got the same letter from Casella that you mentioned, as is I'm sure every other resident received in their mailbox. I'm, you know, I think I've been pretty open in where I stand with businesses in this community. And I've said it before and I'll say it again, Casella is a business and they wanted to do business in our community. Our town's going to be losing between three and four million dollars a year. That's not chump change. And even though we did not use it in the operating budget, we did use it for other things and we're going to slowly miss that. I have been told, when I asked the Town Manager, "How are we going to make up for this?" And he, he's clearly stated that taxes are going to go up. So, and that's, you know, he's told other councillors that too. He actually told us all when we were in a room. Anyways, I for one, do not want to see any type of expansion outside the footprint. However, Casella does more than trash. They, they, you know, than hauling trash. They, they recycle. They, they compost. They have some great programs. If you just like, if, if you do a little bit of research, you'll find out this information. What are you going to do with your trash? Our landfill's gone? 2018, it's going to be kept. What are you going to do with your trash? I'm going to tell you what you're going to do with your trash. It's going to go in your trash can. After 2027, you're going to be paying for it to be removed. However, your trash is going to be going into somebody else's backyard. And so that, to me, is not a solution. That's just getting it out of your backyard, it's putting it into somebody else's backyard. What is your solution to reducing the trash? If, you know, you're a true environmentalist, then, you know, you'll be talking about these solutions and coming up with these solutions openly and public. What can we do? You know, I'll tell you what I've done. I love the zero-sort recycling. That's reduced my trash. I have a trash compactor that I use that reduces my trash. And when I can, I do compost, because composting's good for your gardens, your flower gardens, your vegetable gardens. So, there's a number of things you can do. Also, you know, if you research landfill methane, you'll find that there are communities that tap their landfills. And it's like gold to them. And it does bring in revenue for towns. We tap ours a little bit, but we could have tapped it a little bit more if we would have invested a little bit more money into it. And we could be receiving more revenue than what we already receive out of it. And if you do more research in regards to trash and recycling and everything, you'll find that Germany and Sweden actually import trash because they recycle so much, you don't have all this trash, but they actually import trash to get that methane, to turn into energy. And that is a green form of energy. And we've signed compact grants here. Our Town Manager has sat up here, told the public that we're a green community. We even approved an electric car, you know, so we can be green. We changed the lighting and the buildings. We've got solar panels. We're trying to be green, but we got one of the greenest hills on top of the industrial park and we're not even using it to its full, the full resources that we could be getting out of it. That is green energy. That is something that we could have talked with Casella more about. They bought other parcels of land that we probably could have talked about other things. You know, what's the possibility of such-and-such-a-thing happening instead of a landfill? You know, be that good business partner with the business that wants to do business in our community. As far as I'm concerned, we are not doing, we didn't do good when, we're not talking with a business that wants to do business in our town. Doesn't have to be a landfill. They do other things, like I said. And yes, this was, you know, question one on the ballot, and it was a non-binding question to open up, to ask the community to, or the Town Council to allow the Town Manager to open up talks in regards to expanding into the landfill. I can't speak for all the town councillors up here now, but I remember in the past, we had a discussion at subcommittee meetings and town meetings where none of the councils wanted to do that. But then we had some other questions on there too. And that had to do with businesses coming into our town. And those were all voted yes to prohibit those businesses coming into our town. So now, don't, we don't even have any money that's going to be coming in from the landfill pretty soon. We don't even have any money that potentially could have came from those other questions that was voted on by the members of our community. So, I just, you know, it's, it's not funny, it's not, it's not funny at all. And I think we should have been a better business partner. I think Casella was a very good business partner for this community. They gave to our scholarship. They, they paid for half of the road going up to the industrial park. They, they've done a lot more than what you think. All you have to do is ask and look at documents and... But I also, I do encourage you to do some research... some research on, you know, what other countries are doing with their trash and what they're using it for and the resources that they're, they're getting and the revenue that they're getting out of that. I think that would be really good for those people who voted no and don't want trash, but don't have any other solution what to do with their trash, to really look into, you know, trash is energy. And also, I would like to thank, I would like to say congratulations, I apologize, to all the auxiliaries that were appointed tonight. And I know there's going to be more coming forward soon. And, and I'm glad the vote went the way it did. Counselor Steves, I really appreciate all you do for the community. Even though we don't agree on things all of the time, I, I do value your opinion and thank you. That's it.
Counselor Nash.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you. I had a long list, but I think I'm going to skip half of these tonight because this was a lot longer than I'd expected. But I, I want to start out by just saying that when I put my name up for election, I really wanted to make sure that if I got elected to council, I could have a part in finding focus on priorities. We need to get there. We aren't there now.
Agreed.
Drama, drama, drama. I, I can't stand drama, hype and speculation. I know that goes into politics, but at the end of the day, let's find a way to get something done. Let's keep making progress. I think previous councils have had their goods, good, good occurrences, bad occurrences, but this is our council and our town. Let's get back to work. I also want to state, I think there are four of us up here that aren't, that were not born and raised in Southbridge, but to redirect back to something Counselor McKenzie said, we live in a great community. I chose to be here, as did Counselor McKenzie and others. I'm fairly certain Counselor Manna and Counselor Steves. If we can do a little bit to help clean up when it's not a special event, I think that would be fantastic. I want to extend a thank you to all the volunteers, to the fire department, I'm sorry, to the police department for the cops and kids golf outing on August 4th. It was a wonderful Friday. I had a wonderful time because I had the pleasure of playing that particular day with the town manager, as a matter of fact, and Counselor Claire joined for her first golf outing ever. We had a blast seeing so many people out on a hot summer day at Cohasse with some great sponsors, great community involvement there. And I know there's a lot more to it and I won't get too extensive with the names here, but there are members of the council who, outside of their council duties, volunteered and do so much more with sponsorships volunteering to help make that event a success. So, thank you to all the parties. I'd also like to say thank you. I'm glad that Citizens Forum is enough of a priority for our council leadership to keep it up early in the meeting. I think that is absolutely paramount, so thank you. Congratulations and thank you to those that have put their names up through the police and fire departments for auxiliary positions. That is a valuable service to our community and I'm grateful for anyone who's willing to do that. So, thank you there. Call out just a couple of quick other things here. Please be reminded, since I'm an information freak, water and sewer rate information and how we arrive at those rates, documents can be found online on the town website. There's an explanation on how those rates are calculated as well as the current rates. A lot of people got their bills this last week, I think it was. Questions can be directed to the collector's office or to the assessor. I know that Will and his team can answer a few questions there. Same thing with tax assessments. I had a conversation with Will. If you don't mind, I'll ask your indulgence here. I like to go online and see what Vision, which is the software that shows current and historical assessed values of our properties, was indicating for my own. Found a discrepancy and I know that Will and his team have worked to get that corrected. So, 2018 assessment should be updated on that site now according to an email that I got from Will. I think I'll wrap up with just a, a quick iteration that let's get back to work with priorities and please be reminded that Southbridge Business Partnership is meeting on the 26th. I'm fairly certain I saw that somewhere in a calendar. Thank you.
Counselor Steves.
I'll just be brief. I wanted to say thank you that everybody else has pretty much said thank you to all of the auxiliaries and all the other people that we have appointed tonight and everyone else who is involved in town county, town committees and, and auxiliaries posts, posts and fire department and police and all those other people, because the town wouldn't, wouldn't be able to function without all of you. So, thank you very much for all of your service. And I also wanted to add that we do still need some applicants for both town council subcommittees and for various other town boards. So, you can check out the town website to see exactly what's open. Some boards, some boards have basically vacant, so we really need some people. And the last thing I wanted to point out is, I wanted to say thanks to, to Steve and the people that have put on the Conscious and the Common, the last one, the black and white band last night was really good. It was a fun, a fun show. And if you, you might remember, if some of you have seen them, it's always a good idea to come out there and, and you know, just hang out and catch, catch some sun and catch some good music. And it's a, there's a few more shows coming out, so you'll still have, still have a chance to do so on Sundays.
And Agenda item 28, just next meeting date.
Actually, we have a few coming up. One is, the next one is August 15th, which is the special meeting with the school committee. The school committee meets at 7:00. We actually formally meet at 7:15. And I also want to mention that for, for those of you interested, General Government will be meeting at 6:30 before that. On August 24th, we have a 6:30 meeting to discuss the town manager's goals. And August 28th is another regular council meeting at 7:00 here, all here in the chambers.
If we could just, the comment, since you mentioned the 24th, which we hadn't gone out yet, but the manager has been talked to, we've talked to the manager about that date and he was going to put a list together himself to provide for us when he came back from vacation on that Monday. So, just mentioning that since you brought that up.
Right.
Counselor McKenzie.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I didn't see any notification about this meeting on the 24th. Is it?
Right, we just, I just say, he just announced it, but it's, it's just started to come together. So, we spoke with the town manager on, did he leave Thursday left, so Wednesday night? And we just haven't had a chance to put it, put it together officially. So, the fact that Counselor Steves is mentioning is great because I forgot to put it in my first list, so. It's a goals and objectives meeting. We're trying, he's appreciative that we're trying to get them done sooner than later, so we're going to have a meeting and discuss that.
That is a Thursday?
That's a Thursday, yeah. It's not done, it doesn't have to be done at a standard council. It'll be a working meeting.
No, that's fine, that's fine.
Okay. It'll be a working meeting.
Just asking, setup.
With any luck, the game plan would be to get them actually done and organized and even possibly on the 28th's agenda. Even though it's a Thursday, we discuss that with the manager and with the town manager's office for support. So, we'll see what happens. We're just trying to get, be proactive.
And I will be sending out an email to all the counselors and to the town manager and his, and his staff indicating a revise in my vacation schedule. That's all.
Oh, I just, we did. Okay. Okay. Next council meeting you've got for the 28th, right?
Just mention it.
Okay, thank you. All right. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous.